Okay, I think we're good now?
Yeah.
All right, let's bring the second public meeting of the Commissioners, 2016, back in session, and I would like to recognize Mr. John McBlain of Delaware County Council for coming tonight, and Tim Boyce, the coordinator for Delaware County's Homeland Security, for coming tonight with your well wishes. Greatly appreciated. And moving on.
Won't be as exciting as call win, I don't think.
As long as Jimmy's here, you never know.
Well, I've seen those call win meetings. That is really...
That's the real deal there.
We are now at that part of the meeting for our presentation from KCBA for the new building. Lori?
Good evening. This evening, Jamie Ober from KCBA is here. She is the project architect. And Phil McGlaughlin is from Reynolds Construction. He is the construction manager. And also here is Jim Bannon from NavNoel, the civil engineer doing the design work on the project. So I'm going to turn it over to Jamie.
Kind of tough act to follow, right? Okay, so we were here last in October, and we wanted to come back and give you an update of what we've been up to since that point where we received a go-ahead from you all for the schematic design. We've gone through the design development phase, and we've been working closely with the steering committee, the township staff, and the coordination between all the engineers to solidify the plans and start to refine the design. So on behalf of NavNoel today, I'm going to give an update on this civil work that's been done. I'm going to talk about the building design, and then Bill's going to come forward and talk about the schedule and the budget. So just to get everyone sort of on the same page as we sort of start out here, this is a drawing of the existing site. We have the Manoa and the Darby Road. We have the Wawa in the corner, the existing stadium, and fields and skate park area, and the existing police station. And as everyone here knows, this is an incredibly steep site. There's a pretty big grade change from that upper stadium level down to the backside of the police. So we did receive the zoning hearing board approval on December 3rd. And to sort of talk you through this plan for those of you who are new to it, where I'm kind of circling right now is the new building. It's two stories. Police level, one level, lower level, township level is the second floor. The second level opens up to this upper parking area, whereas the police level opens up to this back parking lot which faces Manoa Road. So in the zoning hearing board, we did receive three approvals. The first approval was allowing a fence and a retaining wall over 30 inches in height in the front yard, which is down here, probably in the corner. The second was allowing parking driveways and a building within steep and very steep slopes. And the third was allowing disturbances of steep and very steep slopes in excess of the maximum limit. We are on schedule. We're targeting a February planning commission meeting for the land development We've been working with Pinoni, the township engineer, relative to the associated HOP work. KCBA met with them, Jim from NavNoel, Lori from the township on Friday, where we started pinpointing the existing utility pools along Manoa Road, and we're looking at saving a couple of those pools. Pinoni is handling the HOP work, but we're coordinating our driveway design and the road widening with them. The stormwater design is ongoing. We're anticipating some vegetated swales for water quality, the underground detention system to control peak rates. And lastly, KCBA is working with Bill at Reynolds Construction and Jim to work through the site phasing of this project. As you can imagine, this is going to be a pretty tricky endeavor to kind of phase this site and get the construction work through. So we're going to review that with the steering committee at that next meeting, and then once that's finalized, we'll bring it back and show all of you. So I just wanted to touch real quick on the floor plans, which the overall have not changed from what you've seen previously. We have done some refinements through working with the steering committee. I'd like to point out two of those items. The first is the police level, which you can see here. As I mentioned, the overall hasn't changed, but we did look at reworking the entry to that police level. We created a larger vestibule to allow a larger, secure area for after-hours access from the public. And as you might remember, this is the stair that is going to connect the police level from the township level, which is what you see here. The one other item I want to point out from the plan, refinement is everywhere along this area. We reworked the corner of this building to allow the public works office to have exterior walls to allow natural light into that area. And we also had a long, detailed meeting with the IT township manager and the engineers working through the functionality of this building, really working through the details of the security, all the cameras, and that sort of thing.
Jamie, can I, I'm sorry to interrupt. Can you go back to the one slide where more of the Sally Port? So how many vehicles, one of them would house the Delaware County's tactical response vehicle, correct?
Yeah, then we have two other vehicles in this third area, which we could, you could park the motorcycles in as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
So to bring you up to speed on the exterior imagery that has developed slightly more since what you saw before, this is the view of the township entrance, which is on that upper lot. We're looking at using a stone material to really tie into the vernacular of the town. Here on, we're kind of circling, that's the main entrance of the township level. And to the left side, this is where we're starting to develop that exterior plaza, which is going to be the memorial garden that we're working with you all and developing and having that sort of like connection between that interior and that exterior area, which will also house large groups if you have any sort of outdoor activities. This is a view of the backside at the police level, showing you the stair that I was describing earlier, where you kind of enter into the police into that vestibule to either go back into the police lobby or go upstairs to the township level. We also wanted to show you a couple interior shots to show you. This is the township lobby as you walk in the front door, where to the left you see the memorial garden. To the right is the commissioner's room, which is this image, which will be a sort of two-story high space and will also be divisible. And we've worked closely with the steering committee in developing these kinds of spaces and providing breakdowns of rooms that can create different types of uses throughout the day.
What's the room capacity?
The room capacity of there?
Capacity, the design capacity of that is 183.
183.
A little bigger than what we have today.
Yeah.
Just a smidge.
So with that being said, I'm going to hand it over to Bill, who's going to go through the schedule and the cost estimate that represents the plans and the imagery that you see here today.
Here, Mike. John, congratulations.
Thank you.
You all have a copy of the newest design development cost estimate. We're going to, I'm going to take you through it right from the beginning. Please stop me anytime you have a question. So this can be a lot of information, but let's start it. Last time I was here, I said we were about 40,000 feet. Now we're about 10,000 feet. We're really just going to dial in the numbers. So if you go to the design development cost summary, which is that first page, it just has a few numbers on it. This is kind of telling you about the building area. The building has gotten just slightly larger than when we started. That's just the architect fine-tuning their spaces and everything else. It's just a little over 44,000 square feet. Site work is holding right around $3.1 million. And then that's all the associate site work, and I'm going to get into more details with that. And the building construction cost is about 11 million, 11 and a half million, 11 million 456. They give you a construction cost of 14.5, and the estimated soft cost of 2.9, almost 3 million. The soft costs have only changed $8,000 since the last time you saw me. So soft costs are holding steady. On the next page, you can see what the soft costs are made up of. And I'm just going to hit some of the highlights there. You have the architect fees, which are a fairly large number, and our fees right below that. As you move down the page, there's a lot of ancillary stuff, the testing agency fees for 75,000. That will be your third-party testing agency during construction for compaction, concrete cylinders, structural steel, paving, all of those things. You have, we get a third-party in to do all of that sort of stuff. So that's your third-party testing. Below that, you're going to see two things. You're going to see number 550,000. That's your FFNE, furniture fixtures and equipment. As a friend of mine likes to say, if you took the building ship and turned it upside down, anything that falls is FFNE. So all you lose chairs, furniture desks, all that sort of stuff. KCBA has run through those numbers once with an interior consultant. So this is a budget established based on that.
Can I ask you about the audiovisual aspect of this? Is that in this number?
Yeah, right below that is a moving cost, and then right below there's 150,000 in teledated technology. So we're carrying a light on for teledated technology, separate. And that would be equipment, the actual wiring, and all that stuff is in the estimate already.
So for tonight, the people can see you but can't see the presentation. So the new building, people watching it at home will be able to see the speaker as well as see the presentation?
That's up to your IT department. That would be the plan. There's a lot of different ways to achieve that.
What's that?
We have it now, actually.
Is that the way it's being done now?
Yeah, but not with the sophistication we would like.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, there's tables. They make different towns I've been to. They have a table you can just drop the drawing on, and it comes up on the screen, that sort of stuff. There's a lot of different ways to go. And I'm sure, Rick, he seemed very on top of the technology. I'm sure he's going to have multiple solutions for you as far as that goes. But just to be clear, your building's wired, security system, car readers, all that's in construction already. You're not buying that in soft costs. This is merely floor extra equipment, projectors, and that sort of stuff.
So to, just to piggyback off of what Commissioner Lewis was saying, so we will have new video equipment that we'll be able to broadcast, La Clair and...
That is the absolute plan. That's where we'll work very hard with Rick and the engineers, KCBA's engineers, Snyder Hoffman. They have specialists that will be drilling down into that as we get close to construction documents.
Right. And that's what, you know, Rick, our IT guy is going to be doing.
No, we're just asking if it's, you know...
That's part of that 500.
What does this entail, this?
The 150, the 550 is furniture, file cabinets, that sort of stuff. The 150 would be loose technology equipment. That's, or, yes, loose technology equipment, different projectors, computers, blades, racks, that sort of stuff.
Cameras.
But your building will have cameras in it already. Your building will have card access in it already. It's going to have your special cell doors. It's going to have the panic bars in the restricted area outside the cells for the officers if they are in a struggle. All that stuff's already in the construction cost, not in the soft costs. It's a very sophisticated building already in construction. This is just to buy those ancillary items that normally get picked up by you guys rather than contractor because you have an opportunity to buy them better through a lot of different state contracting methods, whether it's CoStarz or Pepham or some of these other programs. That's one of the other reasons why it gets separated, because there's a whole way to purchase those that's way more efficient than asking a contractor to do that, if that makes sense. And then right below teledata is your construction contingency. That number will be held throughout the entire budget process and into construction. That's your construction contingency. It's set at 4% of the estimated construction costs in a brand-new construction like this. And with all the information we have already obtained, it's a very comfortable number to move forward with. I don't expect us to exercise that to any large extent. And then below that is a financing cost. We don't know what that is. We took it as a percentage, and that's something that your financial people have to tell us where to plug that in. Normally, we'd build a spreadsheet for you and then turn it over to you, and then you give us an update every month where you are as far as sunk costs and stuff like that goes. So that makes sense.
Yes.
So that's your soft costs. The next page is clarifications, and I just want to go through this quickly because it speaks to some of the things we've already started to talk about. The drawings are at 50, 60% developed. We're very comfortable where they are. We're very comfortable with their numbers. I should have pointed out, you're about $300,000 lower than you were the last time you saw me as far as construction costs go. You were 14.7, I think, and now we're down to 14.5. You were 14.8, now you're down to 14.5. So the number's going in the right direction for everybody, I think, in that regard as well. We're guessing it fewer things. We're not, you know, we're getting real numbers. So we've excluded, obviously, the building permit. You wouldn't charge yourself a building permit, a sewage tuff fee, and a water company fee because all the, the site's already served. We believe we have adequate service. The shelving is a whole different thing. That shelving that's listed there is going to come out of your FFNE number that I talked about earlier in soft costs. We assume that all those utilities are available on the street, therefore no off-site utility work is included. And then below that number five is, all of these numbers are in that $14.5 million construction cost I talked about earlier. There's a design contingency of 680,000. That number goes away. That number's just there for the last bit of fine-tuning they do to the drawings in case something comes up, an unforeseen, something doesn't work right. But that number's going to go away at some point. That's not there anymore. And the escalation, obviously, you're only a few months away from bidding should you move the project forward. Right now, we're on scheduled release documents for bid on August 7th. I mean, August 7th, April 7th, excuse me. About three months. Yes, sir?
Just a quick question. I had made a recommendation about Manoa Road having the light that whenever there's a call and the police have to come out, similar to what firefighters have where the light turns red.
Yes, sir.
Is that something you're still looking at?
I think Dave's got the handle on that, yeah. Along with that off-site work, we're going to make sure that that gets coordinated. All signalization will either be coordinated between the highway occupancy permit work and the road demarcation, for lack of a better word, of that decal lane on Manoa, or we'll get in this project. One way or the other, it's going to be on one side or the other of the project. Whatever level we're at by the time, we have our bid documents ready. If he's ready for that, we can incorporate in the bid. Nothing's cheaper than a bid day. I say that all the time. You always get your best price on bid days. You want to get in the project if you can. So we're carrying 75,000 in for those off-site improvements right now. It's in the construction number. It could get higher, but we just want to be respectful of the budget and just put something in there as a placeholder. It's not a lot of work right now. I don't know how much the utility pool work is going to be by contract and how much is going to be by the utility company. That's always an interesting conversation to have. We have 35,000 in the memorial that you see in that picture there. Off to the left-hand side, you have that memorial area. And this is just for plaques and that sort of stuff that are going to go in that area. The destruction of that memorial area as far as all the hardscape and all that is in the 14.5 budget already, estimate already. So this, and so is this 35,000. I just, as a pull-out number, so if we come back later on and we end up doing $60,000 of plaque work in there, just so you know that the budget is only at 35,000 right now. We have 75,000 there for rock excavation. We expect to hit a little bit of rock, not a lot, but we're just being cautious. There's 100,000 there for landscape. We think that's adequate. 15,000 is detention equipment, not listed. We know what most, we built a lot of jails over the years, county prisons, that sort of stuff. We know a lot about detention equipment, but there are always some new things. So we've put a little placeholder in there for anything that we haven't anticipated. The elevator's 85,000. We always break the elevator out. Don't even ask me why. And then there's 10,000 there for a possible police storage building, which is a whole different conversation. I know, so I'm not going to go any further than that. So the next page just reiterates the areas. And then the next eight pages are detail for site estimate, and then the following pages are the detail for the building estimate. The very back is a schedule. Did you give both pages of that schedule?
Yes.
Yeah, it's kind of hard to read on there anyways, yeah. We are hitting all of our dates. As Jamie said, we're going to be front for land development in early February. We actually had it going in March, so we're ahead on that. Design documents are all progressing to the point where we're, you know, we can be out for bid on April 7th without any problem at all, should everything continue to fall into place the way it has so far. I'm going to take a breath and let anybody ask any questions they want to ask.
Gentlemen of the board, just one note of interest on an unofficial survey. It was everyone I have asked with the police department, the fire department, what have you, are 100% in preserving the stones, the memorial stones.
Memorial stones, which ones? The ones out by the stadium?
The ones that we presently have now.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, just, I just want to make that clear because that's...
Yeah, and that's normal for us. You actually have a couple memorial trees on the property as well. We're going to have to try and do our best with those. The stones are a lot less problematic, obviously, than the trees are.
Sure.
But yes, we're going to do our best for all of that.
The fields are still intact, right? You're not touching the fields for anything?
The fields are still intact until the phasing plan gets any more complicated than it already is. It's going to be tricky, but we do have that Columbia Avenue over there. If we can get that set up right, we can get lay-down and storage over there and not have to come on-site with much of that, not encroaching that. We do have, at some point, depending on how it's phased, we have an excavation, that's a steep excavation for the back wall of the building, very close to the backstop. So that phasing is going to have to be tricky. We may have to, we may have to slide that field out a little bit at some point in time. Obviously, it all has to be coordinated, and we're just in sketches of the phasing plan right now. But these, all these contractors that are going to bid this project are all going to be used to this, these type of working conditions. This is the type of work they bid. The documents are going to be very prescriptive, and, you know, we don't anticipate any problems with that.
And just for clarification, because the IT department clarified, the cameras here have been upgraded. The problem for people watching is that we don't have digital broadcast capabilities, and I know we've had difficulty, but that's a Comcast Verizon issue, not the camera issue here.
Interesting.
Great, thank you, Mr. Seaman. And I believe that Rick has already met with Verizon. So the difference is, right now, correct me if I'm wrong, Paul, we have to take this information that we get, take it on a drive, take it down to the library, and then broadcast it. And again, it's not digital. All that equipment will be housed in the new building. We don't have to do that. In fact, I believe there's even a possibility down the road that we can do live broadcast.
Yeah.
I see. Paul, do we have the thumbs up? We have the thumbs up. Okay, so, yeah.
All you need to make sure he's got that seven-second button.
We're definitely going to need that.
The call button, one or the other.
Need a seven-second delay. War rooms have a kill switch.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Jamie Ober and William McGlaughlin, thank you very much.
So at this point, which...
I'm sorry. Just real quick, can we, when will that be impacting the ball fields? When are we, when, around what time?
In the chapter?
Yeah.
I don't know yet. It's going to really depend on what Conservation District, County Conservation...
Can you come up here so they can see you on the camera? I'm sorry.
Yeah, as far as, as far as how that work will sequence, the bulk excavation of that area, you have to get your soil and erosion controls in first. So it's really going to be a matter of if we get the proper sequence with the County Conservation District that will determine when that could be. That could be as early as May or as late as August.
We need to know as soon as possible, and maybe you could, because we're permitting those fields, and so we need to know if we, you know, what we're doing over there.
I think we would be able to have you answer within 30 days.
Okay.
Is that sufficient?
We probably would have a really good handle on this when we get final land development approval.
Right.
Okay.
Right. But we, we'll work through the, we'll work through the schedule.
Yeah, I just want to make you guys aware so that we, you know, you'll let us know right when that happens so we can...
Yeah. I've done many projects around the, obviously, dollars schools as well, and that's always problematic. So we'll figure it out. Nice about schools usually is they're out in the summer, whereas you guys have a huge amount of activity in the summertime over there.
Yeah.
Does your season end on those, those are two softball fields that are back-to-back, correct?
It comes with a football field, too.
And the football field's lined over top of the outfield of the one softball field.
That's from the back.
And then it's...
That's not really, the football field's not problematic at all.
It starts in August.
Is that Field Day?
It's...
What about baseball? Does baseball finish?
Baseball goes into July. Not a whole lot of play, but just the more that we can, Jimmy can tell you, he plays there himself. So just when we can let, you know, the sooner we can know whatever you know, then we can let the groups go and try and figure it out. But we have both school groups and township groups, so there's no real break.
Well, Lori will be very dialed into this, and we'll have a lot of conversation, I'm sure.
Yeah, and as we discussed, Tim, we're going to lose a season on that one field that's closest to the activity. So we already know that, and we'll have a better idea about when everything will be impacted as we get through land development approvals.
But we're not, right now, the plan is not to take any of that other area for lay-down areas or anything like that. It's just that one field where that one backstop is just so close to foundations. Okay?
Thanks.
Thank you.
If anybody has any questions, the civil engineer is here also, and Jamie is still available to answer any questions. Then I'm asking that the board vote to advance the plan, accept the DDs, and advance the plan so we can finish, make the submission for land development approvals, and finish the construction documents.
Is that on the agenda?
Do we have to do one under new business?
We can do it under new business, I guess.
Do we need, do we even need to do that, or are you just looking for objections?
I'm looking for objections.
Okay.
I'm looking for some affirmative action by the board.
We've already tasked them to go ahead and build a building.
Exactly. I don't think we have to...
Unless Mr. Burns sees a need to have a specific voting thing of it.
No, I think, I think we've already approved it as long as there's no objections going forward. I think we're okay.
No?
I have no objections.
Just continue it now, no?
I don't, I don't hear it.
Well, have we voted on the financing yet?
We have, we've voted on a finance plan. We still have a bond issue that will be coming up later this year.
Yeah.
We have, if Jamie, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe we have 6.2 million set aside to establish. Now, we've been using some of that for already, some of the architects and other engineering, but we plan on doing another bank-qualified loan sometime. We need to start it probably March, April.
Okay. I just, I just want to go on the record that I personally, I didn't serve on this board when this board made that decision, but I personally don't support building a new township, building a new police station. So that's just my personal view. So just put that, put that out there.
Totally noted.
Noted.
Okay, thank you, Brian. You're going to, so you'll continue forward then?
We will.
Yep. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, when are, I'm sorry, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
So when's the next time, we're floating another bond, right?
We're going to float another, we're going to do another $10 million bank-qualified. No, yes.
When are we doing that?
We're going to need to start that probably sometime in March, and there's a process to go with that.
So what did we borrow before, just refresh my memory?
We did...
Six?
Well, roughly 6.2 is put towards the start of this. There was monies in there for other capital infrastructure improvements, flood, flooding controls, things like that that we've been already utilizing. As you see in the budget that we passed, there is additional 1.2 million, I believe, that we put in to do another road program this year for future spending.
Yeah, but how much for just for this project? That's what I'm concerned about.
Well, we have $6 million to start this going.
Plus, we're going to do another 10.
Yeah, we need to get additional borrowings to pay for the rest.
Right. No, I get it. I just want to know the...
Here, there'll be another one.
Yes.
So some of these...
You recall, there was, initially, when we talked about this, we would do it in three, three periods, right. 10, 10, and 10, as we needed. And then we would do it as bank-qualified.
So it'll be $30 million in it?
Well, yeah.
It's all over, be $30 million.
But it's roughly $30 million, but there's other infrastructure improvements, road and programs, things like that.
Okay, gentlemen, thank you very much. Item number... Item number six. Mr. Slankley? Township board orders update.
I reviewed the disbursements for the period commencing December 10th, 2015, and ending January 11th, 2016. I asked some questions. I asked for certain substantiation. All of that was provided to my satisfaction, therefore, in my opinion, there were no irregularities for the period in question. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item number seven on the agenda, Citizens Forum, 20 minutes. We'll have 20 minutes for our assigned speakers and then 20 minutes from the audience. Our first and only signed speaker is Dr. Levin.
Mike Levin, Core 14 Mill Road. I'd like to bring to your attention two things. First of all, I've handed out a revision of the impressions that I've had for the commissioners' meetings over the past year, ending December 31st. Because I have the ability to and the time to revise this, I have subsequently made revisions to it, which is slight, but get the gremlins out of the document. I see there's some improvement in the minutes of the agenda of the meeting tonight, which is good. I don't think that in the past there has been sufficient information about the agenda items and exactly what they are, which can be done in a few words. I still have my request for open records. The municipal building and police station is not one that I worked, that I endorsed like others on the board. I feel that in the meantime, I would like to see plans for this building, and I would like to see floor plans as well as circulation patterns in this building and locations where public meetings could be held. As far as economic development is concerned, I'd like to see some documents that show separate and apart business districts rather than including how you get to these from other places. So I don't see circulation patterns, nor realize that Howard Township Town Planning is really being very successful. For flooding issues, I'd weigh my comments known, there is not enough information which has been released to tell me how the flood control measures are going to be maintained, nor do I see any budgeting for other than 10-year storm events rather than a 25-year total, which is approved in other, being approved in other townships relatively close by. As far as the groundwater flow per renter is concerned, I think this, if approved, is legalized stealing from residents who had no part in their flood application during the time. Now, I want to mention Harvard Square. You will see the write-up, which I've given in the impressions, and this is evolved from the members of the nearby working, nearby dwellings, who have raised several objections to the odors, to the excavation, to the water running through them, to the type of construction that's being planned, and to the documents that are on Greg Laitaly's website. So I responded to this. I had the time over the holidays. I revised it here to indicate that I've taken this on without a client. I have no client in this case. I am not under any obligation to any member of the Board of Commissioners. My obligation is to the citizens to tell them exactly how this project was approved by DEP, something that could have been done if DEP had bestered themselves to come out of Norristown and present to you. It was this absence of presentation by any of you, including the township engineer, which caused me to enter this. I am an environmental scientist. I have been trained in this area. I told the engineer what documents I wanted to see regarding this project. The answer was, go to EPA, go to DEP. I'm sorry. That's not responsible. I asked Greg Laitaly to do one other thing, and that's to monitor the correspondence between myself and DEP. I want to know exactly what was approved in this case, what was approved to allow spills and contamination to remain in place. Do these people who are building on that site have limited liability now? I seriously question that. I question that because those buildings, construction of new homes, are tall, they're dug into the ground 10 to 12 feet, and I have seen vapor barriers which were placed only under the slab, not in adjoining areas of the concrete. Vaguers have a nasty habit of entering construction, empty construction. I want to know how this is being handled. The attorney with a reputable environmental law firm, Michael Golden Catcher, has stated in his summary that we can build there. Why? Because there's probably contamination under the existing buildings on Washington Avenue. I don't think he has proof of that. But on the other hand, if it's true, then there's a question in my mind as to why this site is being developed at all. Thank you very much. Read the rest of the comments, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have as to what I plan to do. I plan to focus on the Department of Environmental...
Thank you very much, Dr. Levin. That is your time, which was doubled also for the agenda items.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
For a first time, Mr. Connell, that's really appreciated.
At this time, I'd like to ask anybody from the audience if they wish to come up for three minutes for agenda items. And I'll start with this side of the room, the first row, second row, third row, fourth row. This side of the room, first row, second row. Okay. All right. Dr. Levin, you want to address any of his... I know we have your impressions, and as far as the request goes, that request is in for the open record.
Well, any open record request that we have, we certainly will comply with, towards what the state law requires us to do. Any of the documents pertaining to the construction, once it's in place, it's in my office, you're more than welcome to come and review it at any time.
Code. If you want to go to code to look at the plans, floor plans.
I'd like to see those documents and construction map.
Whatever we have. We don't have to create... It's important to understand, a lot of times there's misinterpretation of what the townships are required to do, our obligation, what we're responsible to do. We don't have to create a document. If we have the documents and they exist, we're more than welcome to make them available to you. We have the documents and they're in the township building, you're more than welcome to come and view them or get copies if you wish.
Do you have a copy of the documents?
I certainly do. The presentation that was issued this evening?
Yes.
Yes, I have. I have a copy of that right there.
Okay.
It's also available. You can also view it to save you some time. Once this meeting gets published, it's published on YouTube, and then it'll be published on the website. You can view that as well to go through more detail. But once this is entered into the minutes, that document, a copy of it, will be in my office. You're more than welcome to review it.
All right. Thank you very much. We can't do a back and forth here. That's what we can't do. Anything further?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you very much. Nobody else wants to come up and speak? Very good. Item number eight on the agenda is the approval of minutes. We are going to request that these approvals be split, please, because there were gentlemen that were... One is for the budget and one is for reorganization. So let's... First motion?
I'm sorry. Do we have to... Excuse me, Jim. Jim?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have to read it and then split it, or do we just go ahead?
Request to split it?
I think we could just split it now if we just, you know, split it up, make a motion on each one.
Okay. Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the budget and regular meeting minutes of December 14th, 2014.
2015.
I'm sorry, 2015.
And motion made and seconded?
Yeah.
Comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Stane.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell?
Yes.
All right. Mr. President?
Before you, I have some corrections and additions to the January...
Let me read it.
Okay.
I'll read it, and then we can discuss it. Approval of minutes for the reorganization meeting of January 4th, 2016.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Discussion?
Yeah, I just have some corrections and additions and some nits. Page two, number four, we have an extra to close there at the bottom, the last paragraph, strike to close. I'll give these to you, Larry, at the end, if you would.
That'd be great, thank you.
Okay. Number five, the third paragraph is a repetition of the second paragraph. That needs to be struck or stricken.
Reorganization.
The second last paragraph there should be Panone Associates rather than Panone Engineers. Let's see. And then also, in all the motions to close, the motions that were made to close, some have, are followed by agreed to by all commissioners, and in some cases, there's no notation of the fact that it was approved by all commissioners. So I think we want to add that to every section dealing with a motion to close. And then finally, on page six, last paragraph, add the word "for" before Ms. Leith. And that's all I have. And Larry, I'll give those all to you at the end.
Thank you, Mr. Levin.
So that's all I have.
Okay.
You have to accept those changes officially?
Yeah, you're...
Yeah, I'm okay with those changes. Steve?
I'm fine with it. Thank you.
Okay. I take the roll, please.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Motion passes. Number nine, approval of warrants.
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve the farm warrant. Number one, 2016 totaling $2,000,347.95. General and sewer warrant payroll for December 17th, 2015, in the amount of $635,654.73. General and sewer fund payroll for December 31st, 2015, in the amount of $675,583.73. General fund disbursements, 1-2016, in the amount of $347,426.13. Sewer fund disbursements, 1-2016, in the amount of $99,395.21. Community development block grant fund disbursement, 1-2016, in the amount of $115,240.4. Home grant fund, number 1-2016, in the amount of $68,620.25. Capital projects fund disbursement, 1-2016, in the amount of $62,790.63. Credit card statement ending December 27th, 2015, in the amount of $7,637.23.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion?
I have a question, yeah. Regarding the two warrants for the general and sewer fund payroll for the period ending December 17th and the period ending December 31st, there's about a $40,000 difference between those two pay periods. I'm just wondering, is that overtime? What's in that number?
I'm not sure. Amy, you?
To retirement, we have to pay out to retiring employees.
That's what it is? That's the difference?
No one can hear her.
The 40,000, basically?
Approximately.
Yeah. Okay.
Mr. Lewis, I'm sorry, could you repeat that so it's on the microphone, what Amy just told you what the answers were?
You want to come up to the podium? Think you could probably describe it better than I can.
31st payroll, we had two civilian employees retire, and at retirement, we pay out for unused leave time, so the sum of those two employees.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any further questions? If not, just take the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Item number 10, ordinance number P-30, 2015.
Mr. President, I make a motion to adopt the second reading of ordinance number P-30, 2015, further amending and supplementing Chapter 95, garbage, rubbish, and refuse. The size of each container being changed shall not exceed 50-gallon capacity.
Second. Seconded by Commissioner McGarrett. Discussion?
That's still a 40-pound weight limit, though.
Correct. The only thing that's changed was the gallons, the size of the container.
Size of the container.
Take the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Item number 11, ordinance number P-1, 2016.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to table this at this time.
Second.
You got to read it first. Yeah, don't you have to move it first?
Okay. You're right.
Read it, and then we'll table it.
I'll check. Okay. Motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance number P-1, 2006, amending the language for the parking of trucks and commercial vehicles.
Second.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Now I'd like to table.
Second.
Seconded by Larry.
That's not to say that we're not going to do this at some point. I mean, we just need a lot more research.
Motion to table, right? And it was seconded?
Right, I second.
Take the roll, please.
Hey, motion to table, Mr. D'Amelio?
Motion to table.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
No.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
So, Chairman, I'd like to request that this be placed on the agenda for the next work session, so we get the specifics of the ordinance, reading through it last Thursday when we got this. It's a lot of detail to go through. I think it's a... Could almost take up a full work session, so.
Okay. So noted.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Number 12, ordinance number P-2, 2016.
Mr. President, yes. I'd like to move to adopt the first reading of ordinance number P-2, 2016, authorizing traffic restrictions on the following highways. Establish parking of all vehicles prohibited at all times, Kenmore Road Northside, 30 feet west of Arlington Road. Establish sticker parking only on Buck Lane Northside from Railroad Avenue to Panmuir Road. Rescind parking prohibited during certain hours on Buck Lane Northside, 6:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. from Railroad Avenue to Panmuir Road. Establish parking prohibited during certain hours on Buck Lane Southside from Railroad Avenue to Panmuir Road, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Valid residential permit exempt. And finally, establish special purpose parking in front of 3 West Mercer Avenue.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Comments? Take the roll, please.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell.
Yes. Item number 13, ordinance P-3, 2016.
Mr. President, motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance P-3-2015 by creating a public right-of-way at Parkview Drive in Haverford, Pennsylvania.
Second.
Motion made and seconded by Mr. Oliva. Comments?
Yeah, I just question what we're doing here. I couldn't tell by these...
Creation of utility right-of-way, I believe. Mrs. Woodout?
Well, Parkview, as you know, is built on township-owned property, and there was never a right-of-way established. So, we're providing a right-of-way. It's varying width, so we don't have a regular narrative meets and bounds in the ordinance, but we've attached an exhibit document that Panoni Associates prepared for us, showing the varying widths, submitted to PennDOT. They agreed to accept it without the narrative description. And once we have this approved by two readings, we can have the entire length of the road added to our liquid fuels inventory, and the township will begin to receive, you know, monetary compensation from PennDOT as part of its liquid fuels payments.
That's good reason.
Yes.
Thank you, Larry.
Further discussion? Take the roll, please.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell.
Yes. Item number 14, ordinance P-4, 2016.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance number P-4, 2016, authorizing the township to enter into an easement agreement for portion of the property located at 3824 Darby Road for the establishment of trail facilities.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Comments?
Yeah, I had a comment. First, I'd just like to thank the Grace Wheeler Trust for granting this easement. They've been a longstanding family in this community that's been giving back for quite some time, so this is just continuing evidence of that. I did have a couple of questions, though, relative to the easement. It wasn't clear... There wasn't no Exhibit B attached to the easement plan, so I could tell the easement area is roughly 12 feet wide, but I didn't know the length of the easement. That was one question. The second question I had is why it looks to be for a five-year period and how do we arrive at a five-year easement? Just had a question about that, as to why it wasn't longer.
Sure. We'll have Tim. He can address this for you.
Okay. First, I want to acknowledge that Grace Wheeler's daughter, Grace Sharplis-Cook, is with us today. And thanks for coming out, Grace. I've been texting her as the meeting went along. Mr. Lewis, I'm not sure which is Exhibit B that you don't have. Is that the map itself?
Yeah.
I thought they were both...
It's the easement plan attachment.
Is that it?
No.
Oh, no, that's the right-of-way.
I didn't see it. It might be in... Is it... I didn't get it. I didn't see it. But anyway.
So, this is it. It runs... I think the length is approximately 2/10 of a mile, I think, running parallel to the Blue Route going down to Darby Road. Is that accurate, Grace?
This is it. That's what I have.
Yeah, so I think that's a pretty good estimate. I think I have... I have it written somewhere. But I think that's a pretty good guess. I think it's about 2/10 of a mile.
2/10 of a mile.
Parallel to the Blue Route. Okay. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And the question on the five years, it's a good question. We went back and forth on that a number of times. There's multiple reasons for this trail, and again, this is a giant step for us. It's a nice partnership. For those who don't know, Grace's property is the property adjacent to Haverford Reserve and the largest private property in the township. So, where the trails in Haverford Reserve come to an end down where, on Darby Creek, right past the Blue Route, it then runs into Grace's property. So, the goal was twofold. One was to... There's some very sensitive environmental areas, some wetlands, some sensitive areas that we were trying... That are mainly on Grace's property that we were trying to protect. So, the idea was trying to bring along and to be able to connect to Darby Road without going across our property. So, it was a twofold purpose. And so, as we went into discussion about that back and forth, we went from two years to 30 years and back again. And what we wanted to see was what was the impact to the wetlands, to the sensitive areas? You know, was it working in the way that we hoped it would work? We also wanted to give Grace, and especially her family, the opportunity, if it seemed like it was an intrusion on property in a way that we didn't anticipate, or there were uses that perhaps we would learn, give us an opportunity to learn from it without being overly committed and so that her children weren't committed to it. So, that was really...
Yes.
We wanted to make it somewhere between two, and so we thought five years was a good enough shot. So, that's what it is.
That makes sense. So, I assume that the Natural Lands Trust is obviously blessed.
Yeah, we work closely with Natural Lands Trust because the whole property is under conservation easement, as you know.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. That makes sense. Thanks. That's all I have.
Any further discussion?
Again, I want to acknowledge Grace and just thank her. This is a huge plus in our trail development system, and we hope this will be a template for a couple others that we're going to attempt to do moving forward, which Haverford Township has established itself as a real leader in trail development, and we're really being seen by a lot of the county and the surrounding communities. And I really want to thank and acknowledge Grace for her...
Thank you, Grace.
...sincerely with us.
Thank you for proving it.
Thank you.
Haven't yet. Thank you very much for... Take the roll, please.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell.
Yes. And there you go. Thank you very much. Item number 15, resolution number 1995, 2016.
Mr. President?
Mr. D'Amelio?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number 1995, 2016, approving the minor subdivision plan for Harvard Project, Harvard Road, Haverford Township, Delaware County, and known as DC Folio, number 22-01-02625-00, has been submitted to amend the subdivision plan previously approved by resolution number 1914, 2002, by consolidating lots number two and three to create a single 32,664-square-foot lot, and by modifying the lot lines between lots five and six. Approximately 527 square feet of land is to be conveyed from lot six to lot five, resulting in lot five containing approximately 8,662 square feet, and lot number six with 13,540 square feet. The property is zoned, R5 Residential, and is located in the 7th Ward. The after sit plans were prepared by Herbert E. McComby, Jr., PE Consulting Engineers and Surveyors Incorporated, Brumwell, PA, dated October 14th, 2013, and last revised on December 2nd, 2015, subject to the recommendations stated in the resolution.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McGarrett. Comments? Take the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell.
Yes. Resolution number... I'm sorry. Number 16, resolution number 1997, 2016.
Mr. President, make a motion to adopt resolution number 1997, 2016, authorizing the disposition of specified financial records.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Comments? Questions?
Can I just get a clarification of what this is?
Yeah, they're all the financial records that we destroy pursuant to the PA Municipal Act, Records Act.
We do this every year.
Yep.
Thanks. I forgot. Thanks. Take the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell.
Yes. Item number 17, contract awards.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to award the installation of adaptive traffic control system contract to Charles A. Higgins &amp; Sons Media, PA, in the amount of $90,864, contingent upon the execution of the contract and supply of the required bonds and insurance. They were the sole bidder.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Comments?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. I'm just curious as to why they're the sole bidder and why there wouldn't have been someone else that bid.
This is the second time we bid it. The first time, Mr. Lewis, he came in extremely high. This whole traffic impact, there's three traffic intersections, three lights, that actually, in a later date, we're going to do a presentation. But I believe the total grant was $150,000. $95,000 of that grant was used for the purchase of the equipment. The equipment was arrived several months ago. We bid it out, the project, and it came in what we believe was extremely high. I believe the first bid, Dave, was four... Was there four bidders?
First time through, we got three bidders. Almost a year ago. And I can answer a question, Commissioner. It's actually really simple. The... With the infusion of state monies on traffic improvements, we are seeing across the state, especially southeast PA, a very limited number of people bidding public jobs for signet work. It's just a lot of work. They have a lot of works that are not bidding work.
Probably bidding high, too. The other question I had, I guess, so of the $150,000 grant, that leaves about... You said you spent 95, and we got 55, so 55 is applied to this 87, basically?
Roughly 52,000. So, approximately 38,000 will be... Township will fund the rest of the installation.
Why does the township fund... These are obviously state and U.S. highways. Why is the township obligated to fund state and U.S.?
It's a good question. We own the signals.
We own the signals, but they own the roads?
Yes. We own the signals. We get permits for the signals. We maintain our signals.
Yeah.
And they own the roads.
Okay. Last question I had was the utility transfer connections. So, it provides for portable generators should those lights go out. So, the question is, who's going to provide... Who provides those portable generators?
We do.
Do we have those on hand?
Yes.
We do? So, that would be the only... There are other lights in the township that are adaptive traffic control systems?
Well, no more adaptive traffic, I believe. And Larry, tell me if I'm wrong. I believe we're starting to use the portable generators in some of our bigger intersections.
We've been utilizing portable generators for the last two years, two, three years. Every year, we purchase inverters, and they're stored... Historically, we're stored down in Public Works. They're still down there in a Homeland Security shed. They're secured.
So, the police would go out and...
The police in our Public Works supervisors go out. They bring them to certain locations.
Right.
Where that intersection goes out, it's chained, and that intersection has to be prepared. We've done, for example, West Chester Pike from Lawrence Road all the way to Township Line, every intersection. So, if you have...
And we have utilized them, too.
Multiple times.
Multiple times.
Good.
You just said we have at least 10 intersections where we've made accommodations for auxiliary power.
At least 10.
Good.
So, but we do have a generator for each of those intersections. So, if all of them go out, Haverford Township can still operate.
Okay. Great. That's all I had. Thank you.
So, it's a state road, and there are traffic lights, and we pay for them. Why... If we say we don't want a traffic light there, we don't have to put one? Same money?
We have a permit.
Okay.
I'd be a little more interested in that.
Yeah, so when they, so if the criteria comes in, let's say there's an intersection that the state comes out, and we're not requesting it, but they're saying, you know what, with the traffic volume here, there should be a traffic light.
Typically, it's the other way around. Typically-
It comes to our request.
Typically, it's initiated by the municipality or a developer associate. Think of the YMCA, that was initiated technically by us, but the developer through us, the township. And the permit gets issued to the municipality. So the sponsor, we, I mean, if the board might remember, as far back as even 20 years ago, we modified the College Avenue and Haverford Avenue intersection. We modified the traffic signal there. We don't own those two roads, but we found there was a logical reason to modify it. So typically with an intersection, if it meets warrants, and that's what drives it, warrants is a volume of traffic timing, could be configuration, then the PennDOT will say, yes, you meet warrants, and we'll give you a permit for that, for that intersection.
Thank you.
Let you pay for it.
Yeah. We'll let you pay for it.
Question, well, Dave's up. Dave, anything new with the why? You mentioned the why in Eagle Road. Anything new with that?
Their permit plans are under review. PennDOT issued one set of review comments, they've responded, and they're getting back into PennDOT for review comments.
Good, okay.
One last thing.
Should it coincide with the spring construction season, Commissioner? So we would think it'll coincide with our spring, the spring construction season. Permit will get issued, spring will hit, and they should be able to get that worked.
I have one more comment on this.
Okay. One last comment?
Yeah, before you take a vote, we're at the next work session, if time permits, we're going to have Mr. Penney and his staff do a demonstration of the traffic adaptive system, how it works. There's a couple of locations in Delaware County that's up and running, and it's incredible how sophisticated it is. It's all camera.
202 and Route 1, we have, we have an adaptive system that we installed there, and we have concrete that we installed. We helped the concrete township install. Same process, Arley Grant, purchased the equipment, did installation separately. We made a demo to the officers, and Mr. Gentile, I thought it went pretty good. And I think it'll be a nice presentation. I think the board would like to see it.
Very impressive.
Do a work session, relatively straightforward.
These three intersections will be able to talk to each other, and it's all done through camera. They constantly, they're monitoring the traffic flow. If something happens, it backs up. All those three intersections communicate with each other, and then start to make sure that the traffic flows better.
So like on Westchester Pike, where the Blue Route is, that would come in?
Well, these are going to be, these three intersections, hopefully, when there's future construction, we would ask for, especially when Marple Township starts to move into their additional phases, we're going to ask PennDOT and Marple to look at those type of traffic adaptive systems. These are going to Westchester Pike and Township, Lansdowne and-
Lansdowne and Township.
Devil's Triangle, we call it.
The Tri-Hands Down Road.
Yeah. That grant was for those, those right there.
Triangle. With that development just coming in with Marple Township, traffic adaptive is being looked at across the Blue Route. That was a good question.
Need it. Yeah.
Hey, look, it won't solve, nothing's going to solve the triangle.
No, we gotta try to make it better.
Better.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Penney.
Welcome.
Take the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes, number 18, agreement library architect.
Mr. President, make a motion to fund, support, and execute the agreement between the Haverford Township Free Library and Casasio Architects for the renovations of the existing library, subject to any final technical revisions of the agreement upon final review of the solicitor.
Second. Motion made and seconded, and I believe our solicitor has a-
Can I ask you a question?
Has an update to that?
Yep, has an update to this.
Okay, go ahead, Jim.
If I could, I did review the contract that was provided by the library to, or from Casasio Architects. It's kind of interesting here in that we're not really the, we're not really a party to that contract. I mean, we are providing funds to the library, and the contract is actually between the library and the, and Casasio Architects. The contract itself is a standard architects contract, which is used often in the, in these types of situations. There are some additions for, that are, that are placed in for extras, for lack of a better term, extras that are done on the contract, which left it kind of open-ended. So my suggestion after, after reading through the whole contract was that we would change the motion that we have here, because I think what we were trying to do, or what we're trying to accomplish here, is tell the library board that we support this contract and that, you know, but there has to be some kind of understanding that, of how much money we're funding, and we put a number in there of $385,000. That number can be changed if you'd like, but that was just a number that we suggested that you put in. But, but we're not going to execute this contract, and we're not going to be the ones that are liable for the contracts. We're not a party to the contract.
But is that 385, was that allocated before? Did we agree to put the 385 up before?
You had agreed to put up five and a half million.
That's part of those costs.
Right.
The first part.
Right.
So you want to change this?
Mr. President, based on our solicitor's advice, I'd like to amend my motion to support the Haverford Township Free Library entering into a contract with Casasio Architects for the provision of design services for the library improvements with costs thereunder not to exceed $385,000.
Mr. Siegel?
I'll accept that.
Motion has been revised, and the second has been accepted. Any questions? Take the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes. Number 19, appointments to the senior citizens advisory board. Mr. D'Amelio?
Mr. President, I'm going to have to pass.
Okay. Mr. McCluskey?
Mr. President, at this time, I would appoint Janice Duffin to the senior citizens advisory board.
That's Janice.
Duffin, D-U-F-F-I-N.
D-U-F-F-I-N. Thank you very much. Mr. Holmes is out of town. And Mr. McGarrett?
I'd like to appoint John Coogan, C-O-O-G-A-N.
John Coogan, okay, and I'm going to, February 1. Thank you very much. Item number 20, the continuation of the citizens forum for non-agenda items. Everybody on this side of the room? First row? Second row? Third? Fourth? This side of the room? First? Yes, coming up for non-agenda items, absolutely, yep.
Good evening, Mr. President. My name is John McLean. I'm from the Delaware County Council. I thank you for your indulgence, allowing me to address you tonight. I did arrive a little bit late after the ceremony where now Chief Viola was appointed, so I just wanted to come on behalf of District Attorney Jack Whalen. He asked me to come tonight for him, as well as my colleagues on Delaware County Council, and thank you and congratulate the chief. He has been a great resource for us in Delaware County, going back to things like the US Open and working with our 911 center and our emergency services personnel, but also most keenly over these last few years. Chief Viola is a key member of our committee that deals with the Homeland Security Regional Committee, and helps do the planning and the direction for Homeland Security funding that comes from the federal and state government. So he is an invaluable member of our team, and we congratulate you on your, on your choice this evening. I also just wanted to comment, I think it's a great, what you did with the trails this evening, trails are becoming more of a great topic here in Delaware County, and Haverford Township is the leader of our municipalities when it comes to doing the trails. You've done a lot of trails just by yourself, and I think you could probably show us a thing or two in the county about how to do it correctly. Wanted to congratulate you, Mr. Connell as president, and the new members of your board, Mr. McCluskey and, and Mr. Lewis coming on. I'm glad to see that Mr. Lewis has shed a little bit of his go-along, get-along attitude, speak up at public meetings. Congratulate them. Andy is a good friend to me. He was a very valuable member of the Delaware County Council team, and when I was the solicitor there, he was a, really a mentor to me, and I wouldn't be in my position if it were not for Andy. So I congratulate him, and good luck at your meetings. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
A lot longer than county council, I could tell you that. And more no votes.
Tech and roll.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Judy Trombetta. I am the new district office director for State Senator Daleum Leach. So I just wanted to take an opportunity to introduce myself. I'm here basically to keep my finger on the pulse, and here to listen, and here to respond to anything you folks need from the State Senator's office. Coincidentally, I am also, I just recently moved to 2113 Darby Creek Road, so, Mr. Siegel, you'll probably be hearing from me. That's it. And congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Of course. Thank you.
Contact where we can contact you, and we'll put it out there for the public.
Thank you. 610-768-4200 is the office phone number.
Thank you very much, and welcome.
Thank you.
Item number 21, new business. Item number 22, other business. Let me make sure I'm on notes here. Mr. D'Amelio?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, too, want to thank, we're welcome, the new commissioners, Commissioner Lewis and Commissioner McCluskey, to this board. I think we have a fine board, so welcome and look forward to working with you. I'd also like to thank county council for coming. It's always great to have county council at our meetings. I don't know if you enjoy coming here at this late hour, but no, it's a pleasure having you here. Larry, congratulations to you. You certainly deserve it. Thank God you've been our township manager. You've done a fabulous job of bringing us into the 21st century, so it's great having you here. I'm going to miss Police Chief Petten. What a wonderful man he was, and we all know what his accomplishments are, and I'll miss him dearly. But John, congratulations to you. We have such an excellent police force, and our leadership is amazing. Lieutenant Hagan's here. They attend many meetings with the constituents. When we hold, when we hold our meetings in our wards, and I can't thank you guys enough for responding so quickly. And finally, Evelyn Yankowski, I'm going to miss her, and she was like a mother hen on the zoning board. She, she would tell you if you weren't behaving, she, she had a way of chastising you quickly. But she had a lot of integrity, and she cares deeply about the zoning board, and she cares deeply about the township, and she will be missed. So, thank you. That's all I have.
Just want to take a moment and thank the residents of the 3rd Ward. It's the first time I've been able to speak publicly to them, and I appreciate their trust in me for this responsibility. I'm anxious to get to work with this board on behalf of the residents in the 3rd Ward. I also want to take a moment to offer my personal congratulations to the chief. In the time that I've spoken to him, he's been very cordial to me, and I look forward to working with him. Finally, also to this board, you know, I'm certain that we will not always agree, but everybody on this board has extended a warm welcome to me, and I appreciate that, and I look forward to getting to work. And that's it for this time.
Thank you. Mr. Siegel?
Yes, I just want to follow up Commissioner D'Amelio's comments on two areas with Ms. Yankowski. Her candor, including in how she left the board, I told her today I admire greatly. I think she served this township well, and I want to thank her for her service. I also, as I mentioned to Peoples after the meeting last week, I always find the most difficult meeting of this board to be the reorganization meeting, not because I know I'm always going to lose a vote for president or vice president, but because when we select people to represent us on our, on the boards and committees, people, the residents and the people who are, who are interested don't always recognize that we are not voting against one person when more than one person is nominated. And this year, we had, I think, an extraordinary group of people who applied to be on those boards. And it is a very difficult decision when you have to choose from two or three, or, as we did in some areas, four applicants for one position, all of whom were very qualified. So I want to encourage the people who were not successful to understand that it had nothing to do with them, but it was this board's ability to make a tough decision and choose among different people. And it's a tough vote. I find it very, it's the meeting I like the least. I will also be announcing shortly my semi-annual constituent meeting, probably in April. I want to also commend and welcome new Chief Viola. As I have explained to him in the past, my, my practice often puts me in conflict with police, but I can say that when I came here, one of the first votes I did was to appoint Chief Petten, and I was, and I'm very proud of that vote, and I'm equally proud of this vote, because the professionalism that the Haverford Township Police Department displays is extremely admirable. It is not what I see in, in other areas. And if this department were, if we could duplicate it, I think a lot of the conflict you see locally and elsewhere would be gone. And finally, since we have Mr. McLean here, I thought he would be interested to know that a Delaware County native, Glenn Robinson, who is the basketball coach at my alma mater, Franklin and Marshall College, this weekend won his 900th basketball game as an NCAA basketball coach. He is fourth all-time in wins. Born in Yaden in 1944, he will, within the next week, become the third highest winner of games, surpassing Bobby Knight, and he has coached and won more basketball games at the college level than any coach who has never given a scholarship. So there's a native who's only as far as Lancaster County, but also is someone this county should be proud of, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Lewis?
Sounds like it might be worthy of a county council resolution or acknowledgement. I want to thank Councilman-
If I could attend.
Councilman McLean for being here and his kind comments. Appreciate it very much, John. Also, I want to congratulate Chief Viola on your ascension to the chief position. I know firsthand of your talents from talking with the USGA. It's not known, but the fact is that the USGA still, you know, United States Golf Association as a result of hosting the 2013 US Open here, was so impressed with the Haverford Township Police and the way that John Viola and his staff conducted themselves and oversaw that operation, that they still call him to this day and use him as a resource for other tournaments. So congratulations to you, John. And to Larry Gentile, congratulations on your reappointment. I think we're fortunate to have, when I served on this, first served on this board back in 2004, as Jimmy wore a call, they weren't the best of days. It was, it was pretty divisive and-
We had a few battles.
A few battles going on. It's, it's a new day, and this township has made great strides in the last four or five years, and I think in large part for, because of the strong leadership that you've provided, Larry, as our township manager. So thank you for your service. Finally, I'd like to just raise an issue. It's really a problem that I'd like the board to be aware of, and I think the township to be aware of as well. Some, some may already know about this, but a lot of people in the 5th Ward do know this. But there's going to be a closing of some bridges, some pending closes, closing of the, the College Avenue Bridge in the 5th Ward. It was supposed to be closed sometime in the spring of this year, but they've delayed the closure of that bridge probably till July, August timeframe. But that bridge will be closed for a year. Then immediately following the closure of that bridge, they will be closing two bridges over Ardmore Avenue, the one over the Septa Rail Line, and there's a second bridge over Cobb's Creek. So that, those two bridges will be closed, and that will be a year and a half project. So we're talking about almost three years of bridge closures, and very disruptive for the 5th Ward and, and the 3rd Ward, and really for this township. So I've had conversations with Senator, Senator Leach, I've had conversations with Representative Vitale, I've talked to the PennDOT secretary, Leslie Richards, and we're going to be coordinating a series of meetings. I'd like to coordinate with Larry and, and Chief Viola on this as well, because I think, you know, I'm very concerned that we just don't slap up a couple detour signs, because we're going to have a lot of people trying to get from point A to point B, and they're going to be using a lot of streets, cut-through streets, and there's going to be a lot of speeding. So we're going to have to come up with some creative ways to try to mitigate this impact on the 5th Ward and certainly on this township. So I would ask that we, you know, we try to coordinate with our state representatives, our state senator, our, our PennDOT secretary, and try to come up with a good plan, maybe have a public meeting sometime in, in the April, May timeframe to, so the public can be informed about the, how the bridge is going to look, what the detour plan looks like, what the mitigation plans are. So I just want to make this board aware of that problem that's looming out there. It's going to be very disruptive for a long, long period of time for all of us, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Yeah, I remember when Faith Woodlesley did that back in the 70s. I think it was either the Buck Lane Bridge or College Avenue Bridge, and they redid it, and it did take over a year. They, they're usually not done on time. I hate to tell you that, but that's how it works over the Septa Bridges.
Yeah, I know, it's an added complication. That's what's actually caused the delay. It was supposed to be let, the bid was supposed to be let in January. It's now going to be let in June, it's because of this coordination with Septa, because obviously they have to operate those-
Well, they haven't changed that.
They have to operate the lines at the same time that they do the reconstruction, so that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. McGarrett?
Okay, well, first, Mr. McCluskey and Andy Lewis, welcome to the board. Steve D'Amelio and Bill Wexler, myself. I, myself in the 7th Ward, like to thank my constituents for putting me back on the board. And also, Larry Gentile, congratulations on your award for township manager and hanging in there with us. I know you want to stay another 10 years, Larry, so we'll talk about that in the very near future. And John McLean from the county, thank you for coming out. You really got Johnny Viola's head. I saw it, I looked back, it's really up there, you know what I mean? He's feeling good, especially when it's from Jack Whalen, that's his buddy, so. Also, I'd like to wish Carmen Petten the best of luck, and thank him for seven wonderful years here in Haverford Township. And also to Johnny Viola, to do the best in his duties as chief. Carmen taught him well. And that's all I have for now.
Mr. Wexler?
Thank you. I'd also like to congratulate both chiefs, Chief John Viola and Carmen. As Steve said, we'll miss Carmen. He's been a great influence, I think he's been a great influence for John as well, and John said that in his acceptance. Larry, congratulations. I also want to reiterate my congratulations to Evelyn for the fine work she's done. And then on two sadder notes, I'd like to offer my condolences. Last week was not a great week for the township with the, I had three funerals I went to, a friend's wife, and then our police officer, and then also Sam Burry, who was a former chief of Bon Air, served 57 years in the Bon Air Fire Company, passed away just after Christmas, and he'll sorely be missed at Bon Air and in the 9th Ward. And then also, our condolences go out. I know we disagree a lot, but Greg Vitale's father passed away this past week, and his funeral is tomorrow at Sacred Heart Church, so we offer our condolences to Greg for the passing of his father, so that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Wexler. Mr. Oliva?
All right, again, I'd like to, to welcome Commissioner McCluskey and Commissioner Lewis to the, to the board. Also, Larry, what a great job you've done, really. Just very impressed with what they, they shaped this township was in and what you've done with it. It's, I'm very impressed. So also, John, great job, just very proud of you. You know, a guy who's been born, raised here, you know, came up through the ranks, and it's really good to, to see it. To the chief, to the, or past chief, I guess, Carmen, he really did a fantastic job. He really had quite a, he came into, to a, to a mess, and, and he cleaned it up and did a fantastic job, and there's one thing I can say for the guy, he makes everyone around him better. He made the, you know, the sergeants better, he made the patrolmen better. Anyone who around him, it just all, you know, bled out, so he's, he's, he's a good man, and I'm sad to see him go. And I have nothing further.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gentile? I'll offer you the floor.
Mr. Lewis, thank you very much. That's a great, great recommendation, and I agree. I'm also concerned about the impact, and I think there's public meetings and getting together with the pre-plan, and I'm also concerned about the aesthetics. Historically, you know, and aesthetics about this town is one, one of my number one goals, and we've done a great job in improving that, so, but we'll work closely with that. As soon as I get the, the bid, bid specs from PennDOT and let us know that where their, where their timetable was, we'll communicate that with, with the police department, get some public meetings.
Great, thank you. Appreciate that.
The last thing I have, again, as I, as I said, I sincerely appreciate the continued support and the reappointment for another two years, and I'm extremely proud to be the manager of the town. And I'm extremely proud to be the manager of the town. Historically, you know, I started here in 1979 as a paramedic. Nobody, I would have never thought that I would be the manager someday. It's amazing where things, things take you sometimes. But my staff, I'm blessed to have the staff that I have, from Lori to Tim to Amy, the chief, and new chief, and his administrative staff, and Mr. Doherty, I can go on and on. I am, I'm blessed to have the superior staff. It wasn't, if it wasn't for them, we would not have accomplished the outstanding, outstanding